Today and vote on it?
That's what we just voted on. Just allow that to happen.
That's what the question is.
If you vote to add it to the agenda.
Okay.
Affirmatively, you have to first vote to add it to the agenda. And if there's an affirmative vote permitting it to be added to the agenda, you can then vote on the bill itself.
I just want to make sure we're doing procedure correctly. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, Bill number, please read 12525-22.
Bill number 12525-22. An ordinance of the county of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania amending Article 209 of the Administrative Code of Allegheny County entitled Office of Property Assessments, Section 5-209.05 entitled Chief Assessment Officer Duties and Responsibilities in order to establish a mechanism for ensuring continuity in the chief assessment officer position. Sponsored by President Katina, and that's it.
At this point in time, I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion, Councilman. I don't know. There was a tie for hands up. Yeah, I was quick.
My comments are much like I've been repeatedly making. I have a certain amount of just angst when the agenda gets amended, particularly if it's something significant that the public might be expected to comment on. And in fact, I'm rather disappointed that Mr. Soli isn't here because I think every single time there's been something assessment-related on our agenda. He's offered public comment in that. So I am troubled when something substantial is added at the last minute to the agenda. I don't think it's good policy. I don't think it's good practice. And I'm just not, not the way we should be doing things. And then along with that vein is exactly what I said earlier, in that when things get hurried up, is there's opportunities for bad things to happen. I'm repeating myself, and I apologize to council.
Thank you. Mr. Soli, actually, he's having, he's having surgery, so that's why he's not in attendance this evening, or else he would have been, loved to have been in our committee meeting. He heavily supports both of these bills. Councilman DeMarco?
I have need to echo Councilman Vetkowski's statement here. I mean, from a sunshine law perspective, okay, we've had no public comment on this. This thing was just amended downstairs. And then, you know, at 4:00, at 4:15, now we're bringing it up to vote here, you know, and so we're not hearing from anybody or giving the public a chance to comment. Also, to Councilman Vetkowski's earlier statement, you know, I do agree that you like to have time to be able to hear both sides. You want to hear the folks that are for the bill, so you can understand what the perceived benefits will be. You also want to hear from the folks who are opposed, so that you can understand, you know, what some folks believe the negatives would be, because none of us, especially in a part-time body, can be all-knowing, okay? Worse than anyone ever make that claim. And so we have that issue before us, and the whole process is broken. Whether it be in Harrisburg or Washington, the legislators, when they introduce a bill, there's a lot of conversation, a lot of discussion around the bill. Then it goes to a committee. There's discussion around the bill and everything there in their committee before it's brought up in the committee, where it's then marked up, debated, before all these things go up to the floor, where all that takes place and happens. Here on council, we are like moving at warp speed with legislation that's like flying in here, left and right. And I have concerns about some of the text in the bill in regards to, again, I believe that it brings up an issue with the charter, where it's saying that the county manager can hire folks, but only with the consent of council, okay? And so that's a concern for me in this bill, because I don't believe that we could be hiring staff. So, you know, my objections are twofold. One, no public comment, I think it violates the sunshine rule. And then the second thing being that I don't believe we have the power to hire people. Now, I can support us taking and passing tonight another piece of legislation, which came out of committee, which was just to extend the appeals window, to clarify that for people, because they're under time constraints. But in this particular bill, I have an issue with that, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
I do.
Councilman Walton?
I have to share the concerns expressed by Member Vetkowski and DeMarco. I fully support extending the appeals period to ensure that residents of Allegheny County are, that their taxation is addressed in an appropriate and equitable manner. That is first and foremost in my mind. But I do have some, all of some significant concerns about whether or not we have the ability to hire staff that is not responsible and accountable and controlled by council itself. It flies in the face of common sense. The government of Allegheny County has an executive branch, a judicial branch, and a legislative branch. I think we're engaging in real overreach. Real overreach. And it causes additional concerns.
I think it needs to be bettered.
And how we deal with these issues. I think it's, I'm voting no. I think it's inappropriate. I think it's short-sighted. And I also don't believe, as Member DeMarco said, that it gives the community, the residents of Allegheny County, an appropriate amount of time to respond with concerns that they may have as a result of the decisions that we're making. Thank you.
Counsel, or I'm sorry, Solicitor Frank?
Yes, sir.
Could, I mean, could you give us an opinion on this? What your thoughts are?
You want it tonight? All right, okay. All right, well, I'm ready. Okay. The, if the issue is, is it an overreach of the council's power to essentially approve a chief executive, chief assessment officer that has been designated by the county manager, as I understand it? I do not think it's any different than the various appointments that come to us that then require council approval. I think there's a separation of powers there. I think there's a precedent for doing this, and I don't believe it is an overreach in terms of the powers of council.
Thank you. And as a matter of fact, I believe this bill's been in committee now for, I want to say, six months. And some concerns were raised, and we addressed them and changed the bill. But obviously, these other concerns, it's the first time I'm hearing about tonight. And if we had ample opportunity, I had enough meetings, actually, I was criticized for having too many meetings, and because of this process, because everyone thought we wanted to get the job done sooner than later, and we just sort of kept circling the airport, and we never brought the plane in to land. And I was trying to do this, obviously, before our summer recess, since we're not going to be back for almost two months at this point. So that's where, I mean, to respond to some of the concerns, I mean, I just thought that that would be appropriate, just to put that out there for everybody. Is there anyone else that has a comment? Councilman Doer?
Yeah, President Katina, so this was actually the first assessment review practices meeting that I missed today. I had another meeting, three, that ran long, that I wasn't able to attend. But one of the things I would ask is, obviously, the second bill, the one that the others had mentioned in terms of expanding the window, that is, the timeliness of that is important. I mean, you being the primary co-sponsor of this bill, with other members having their concerns, and also to allow the public to view and comment, as well as, you know, our solicitor to craft a full opinion on this, is the timeliness of this bill, as well as the window one, in your opinion, as the lead sponsor of the bill, critical to passing it now, or could we pass this?
Well, it was asked, the problem right now is that we have no way to verify the veracity of the numbers that are being sent to STEB. This actually bill basically changes that, so that we can request that information, that data, and basically check that information to be sure it's truly accurate. Or a third party could even, it would be out there publicly for a third party to review that information, namely, the taxpayers, to make sure that we don't have, unfortunately, I mean, some of the problems that we had before. I mean, it was a check to basically ensure that. And that's what this bill's tried to address.
So, yes, the timeliness of the first one, yes or no? Would you feel like, does this need to be passed today, or can we wait until after recess? And, you know, unfortunately, we're about to hit recess in terms of having public comment, having our solicitor take a deep delve into it, just to satisfy Councilmember Walton, Vetkowski, and DeMarco's concerns? Because I'm not against the bill outright, I just also don't know if I have, I mean, I wasn't aware I was going to be voting on this tonight. I thought the only one potentially coming out of the assessment practices meeting could have been the clarification of the assessment windows one, not this one. And like I said, unfortunately, this was the first one that I missed. So I just, like, I feel uneasy in terms of clarifying this, voting on this right now, given those concerns, and also I haven't had to take a deep delve into the bill beyond the conversations we've had in committee, of which I've been a part of.
Well, we can always, I mean, if there's something uncomfortable in the bill, the bill's always able to be amended.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Councilman Vetkowski?
I was just going to ask if the chair would get an opinion from the solicitor regarding the question that was raised earlier, if this item was substantial enough to entail a violation of the Sunshine Act.
Okay. I don't see that there's any violation of Sunshine Act here, because the Sunshine Act requires that we publish the agenda. And then, if you want to amend the agenda, you are permitted to do so by a vote of the governing body. But it has to be, it's a two-step process. You have to, first of all, amend, take a vote to allow for the agenda to be amended. And if that passes, you can then go to the case in chief. But I don't see any violation of Sunshine Act.
Councilman DeMarco?
Mr. President, for clarification, I think this listener just gave his opinion regarding the Sunshine Act, but what he spoke on was amending the agenda? He didn't clarify, how was the public supposed to have an opportunity to weigh in and speak on this?
Well, Councilman, there's nothing that I'm aware in the Sunshine Act that states where you do that, where you amend the agenda, how there would be any issue or right of the public to comment on it. The provisions on the public access are quite general, and they just say that, or public comment, you just say people can make public comment. I believe in the Sunshine Act itself, it doesn't say that the public comment must or must not relate to that that's on the agenda. I just, I think it's a gap in the Sunshine.
Mr.? Councilman Walton?
Look, in the instant case, I'm not going to say with any authority whether or not this violates the Sunshine Act or not. What I am going to say is irrespective of whether it violates the Sunshine Act or not, this does call into question the issue of transparency, the issue of open government, the issue of responsiveness and the opportunity for input by the public at large. Regardless of any other issue, we amended the agenda today on a committee action, and we're voting on it tonight without any opportunity to have input from the public at large. Is this the kind of government we want to be accused of operating? Is this what we want, is this how we want to be viewed? For me, the answer is no. You guys do what you think you need to do. I'm going to be accountable to the folks that I represent and say, I will not ignore their voice. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Councilman DeMarco.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, I would respectfully ask that you potentially hold this or pull this from a vote till we give the public the opportunity to weigh in, because failing to do so, I would have to vote no on this tonight. But yet, I share with you the desire to ensure that the county is being held to provide the correct, excuse me, correct information to the STEB board, and that we have the ability to access this information. So I'm on board with that. But with, you know, without giving the public the opportunity to comment, without talking about these other two things, which is giving council the ability to yea or nay the hiring, and then the ability to basically fire or terminate this person, I just believe it requires a little bit of extra debate. I share with you where you want to go. I just question the vehicle we're driving in right now. And I'm sorry it's come up at this late moment.
I understand that, Councilman DeMarco, but it was your, maybe I'm confused, but I thought it was your, we made the amendment change, where you offered the amendments, basically based upon your input, changing it to a full major, or two-thirds of council to fire the officer. I'm just confused as to where, I mean, what changed between then and now?
Sure. You had, in original language, you had put in forth that just the majority of council would be needed to hire and fire this person. I thought that that was absurd with all the split votes that we have here. That's why I subjected, or asked that we make it two-thirds. Upon further investigation, looking into it, it became apparent, to me anyway, that it violated the charter, again, and that we're interfering with the executive branch by trying to make those decisions to do so. You know, if we would have looked at saying, doing, but you know how like you have, for the Board of Elections? For the Board of Elections, we have an oversight board. It's called the Board of Elections. And those folks review and oversee the elections process. I'll wait till you guys are finished. But it oversees the election process, okay? If we wanted to make some sort of charter change that would create a board, potentially of the president of council, the two at-large members, something of that, to ensure that there was a check and balance, that someone was able to look out for the taxpayers and make sure that the information being recorded in the real estate division in regards to sales, and the assessment, and what was being fed to the state was accurate, I could support that. But it was this coming up, and by becoming aware of it, that caused that change, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. See, I guess I'm concerned because there's, I believe there's a little bit of a sense of urgency at this point in time. Obviously, there's been court cases, and we've had numerous testimony in front of the entire committee about how these numbers were basically, I mean, I'm sorry, I have to use the word malfeasance. This was deliberate in, I mean, these numbers being, the numbers were cooked. I mean, the judge basically said the county cooked the books. And with this, with this ordinance, basically, we're going to have that information available to the public. So the public will be able to scrutinize the figures that the county is basically sending to the STEB board. And I believe that's actually critical in providing transparency. I mean, if we're going to talk about transparency, we want to make sure the public has the most accurate information. And this bill goes to ensure that accurate information, that they can verify the veracity of what the county's sending to the STEB. And right now, based upon what's happened in the past, I really don't have much faith in what we're doing. And that's why this bill was written, to try to give the taxpayers, basically, a chance to basically double-check the county. And I stand by it, that I think that, I mean, the sense of urgency is needed, because, like I said, I just don't trust the system at this point in time.
Mr. President, I understand the lack of trust in the system, because we've seen numbers that didn't appear to add up based upon a Commonwealth Court ruling. But I still stand by my comments regarding the Sunshine Act. I mean, one of our colleagues on council used the Sunshine Act in the jail oversight board meeting to require an additional hearing to take place, for additional time to be put on the agenda, so that the public would be able to come in and make comment before that vote could be approved. I see no reason why something similar here shouldn't take place. And I understand and share with you the determination to get to the bottom of it and fix something as quickly as possible, but I think we do it the right way is more important. And if we're talking about serving the public here, and doing this for the public, shouldn't we give them the opportunity to comment on it?
Jared, could you please read what the amendment actually was, what we amended in committee? Because the rest of the bill has not changed, correct?
Correct. The amendment in committee today was the addition of a clause at the end of Section 5, 209.05(c)(13). It would have added, or it did add the language, "and shall provide such information in the format requested by the council president with regard to the reporting by the chief assessment officer regarding the CLR numbers."
So that was the only change?
Correct.
To the entire bill that we're talking about this evening?
Today, correct.
Today. Everything else stayed the same?
Everything stayed.
Okay, so we had, like I said, ample committee meetings to discuss. I understand how we could be concerned about maybe the public hasn't had an opportunity to discuss the reporting method, or how the reporting is done. But really, I don't see any reason as to basically handicap the public into basically providing the information to them based upon that one piece of information. If we were trying to do something against the public, I would be obviously against it, but that goes to help the public. I mean, that goes to help the taxpayers of Allegheny County, because that little line basically entitles them to the information that has supposedly been cooked in the past. And therefore, I mean, that's why I'm so strongly advocating for this tonight, because it was only that one little line, and that one little line makes all the difference in getting the information to the taxpayers.
Mr. President, what you're talking about here is not going to have an effect, immediate effect, in anything in regards to the taxpayers, because, as you shared earlier here, these cases are being litigated in court. And yes, while we've had multiple committee meetings, until the time when we bring a bill up on the floor, we discuss it and we actually vote. All of us reserve the right to be able to change our mind based upon additional information, insight, direction from solicitors, or whatever, okay? And that's exactly what's taking place here this evening.
Okay. Is there anyone else this evening? If there's no one else, again, Councilman Futolis, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but waved my hand so much it fell off.
And, Mr. President, if I would say too, in regards to public comment, and we talk about public comment, there is no public comment in our committee meetings. So the fact that we've had this in the committee for a number of meetings doesn't necessarily say that the public had the ability to comment on it.
We've actually allowed the public to comment in the special committee. I mean, there's been numerous people that have, not on the agenda, that have commented, that technically were part of the public. Thank you. Councilman Futolis?
Okay, well, you know, we talked about transparency, we talked about the legality of us hiring someone. Geez, no, those things have ever been done before.
Councilman Futolis, who are we hiring?
No, no. In the event, in the event the administration fails to hire someone, I believe I read that, that we would, do I have that right? If they failed to.
If they failed to. If they failed to.
Okay, that's the question. Chances of that happening probably be slim. But I think what I'm more concerned about is what's best for the people right now, whether, how we vote on this, because I don't want to slow the process up any more than it's been. But the bottom line is, it's about the people, even though about the transparency, about, you know, somebody speaking about this, and the legality of, if the administration fails to hire someone, then we would have that right to do so, which, that may never happen, and we cross that road if we got there. But I think what I'm getting at is, I was downstairs, I'm all ready to vote yes, and after everybody up here talking, now I don't want to vote yes. The question is, what's the best thing to do for the people of this county? That's what I'm concerned about. I don't know what to do.
Councilman Klein?
Well, you know, it seems that transparency can be given expression in any number of different ways. And, you know, obviously, you know, the people's voice, as we all agree, does matter, but it would seem that this bill, and what is being proposed here, the spirit of it is really kind of grounded in this notion of transparency and openness. And so I think that, you know, given that reality, and given the fact that it will be something that will be a part of governance in this county, I think that we're honoring our commitment to transparency in moving with this. And, look, obviously, we could, you know, kick it down the road, come back after recess. I don't know what, I don't know what more we would learn by delaying it further than we have an understanding of right now.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Councilman Macy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just because there are these concerns, whether some ideas that this isn't the right way to go, that there isn't transparency, there is transparency, there's just too much unanswered questions to vote at this point. I do believe that we should get back, get these questions answered, vet it at a meeting. I mean, I'm not on that committee, so I can't vote one way or another, but I can speak. But I just think that we may be moving a little too fast, and I'm a no vote.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Jared, please take role.
On the motion approved, Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Vetkowski?
No.
Mr. DeMarco?
No.
Mr. Doer? Ms. Filiagi?
No.
Mr. Futolis?
No.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
No.
Ms. Nakarati-Chakas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio? Mr. Walton?
No.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes nine, no six, the bill passes.
Liaison reports, any liaison reports this evening?
I apologize, there was one other bill.
Oh. Oh, yeah, we got to get to the next, okay. 12742-23.
An ordinance of the county of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania amending the Administrative Code of Allegheny County, Article 207, entitled New Board of Property Assessment Appeals in Review, Section 5-207.08, entitled Filing of Appeals in order to clarify applicability of special assessment appeal windows for 2022 and 2023 for properties impacted by court ordered adjustments to the county's common level ratio.
At this point in time?
I apologize, it's sponsored by President Katina and Councilmember DeMarco.
At this point in time, I'd like to make the motion to approve. The motion has been made and seconded. Discussion?
Wait a minute.
Any discussion? See, none. Jared, please.
Wait, wait.
We already did. We added them both.
My concern with this one is the same as the last one.
I'm sorry?
My concerns with this one?
Same as previous.
Are the same as members of council have already expressed for the last one. The same issues apply.
Anyone else this evening? Jared, take role.
On the motion approved, Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Vetkowski?
No.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Doer?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Futolis?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Not with him.
He left.
Ms. Nakarati-Chakas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 13, no zero, with one member absent, the bill passes.
Liaison reports now. Anyone who have a liaison report? New business ordinances resolutions. 12743-23.
It's a motion to the Council of Allegheny County authorizing an information request pursuant to the terms of the FAST Act, an urging enactment of the Derrail Act and Railway Safety Act of 2023 with all deliberate speed, sponsored by Councilmember Doer.
Councilmember Doer?
Thank you, President Katina. So I held this, at that time, Acting Chair Paul Mary held this last week, to allow members time to read the legislation in which this motion is in support of. For those of you who don't know, I, I mean, everyone probably does, I worked for Congressman Lamb in 2018, and I was, in fact, the organizer for Beaver County. So I know a lot of folks around the Ohio-Pennsylvania border, right around where East Palestine is, that were affected by the train derailment there. And since then, I've been following a number of pieces of legislation around that derailment, and one of which was introduced, one in the Senate, one in the House, one by Senator Fennerman, Senator Casey, and the one in the House was introduced by Congressman Deluzio here, called the Derrail Act. So very quick overview of what the Derrail Act would do. The Derrail Act is decreasing emergency railroad accident incidents locally or derail. It would require the U.S. Department of Transportation to oppose more strict regulations on trains carrying hazardous materials. It would direct the Department of Transportation to modify the definition of high-hazard materials. materials. Flammable trains, I mean, a single train transporting one or more loaded tank cars of a Class III flammable liquid or Class II flammable lit gas or other hazard materials to scarcely determines necessities for safety. The Department of Transportation currently defines a high, high hazard-